Good evening, everybody. I want to call this meeting the Kingley County Board of Supervisors to order.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges?
There.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Chairman.
Here. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have review and adoption of the meeting's agenda. The only change we have is once submitted to add to our closed session resolution. Yeah, we will note it here. So we're going to amend the agenda to add Section 88 to consult with legal counsel on its specific legal matter to be closed meeting. That's the only change I'm aware of. If anyone has anything else that we know, if not, I won't pay any attention to that.
We did not need it with the church report.
I don't believe so. All right, any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman.
Agenda is adopted. We come to public comment period. One opportunity for three minutes per individual or five minutes per group. Do we have anybody on Zoom that's pre-registered?
Yeah.
Okay, so only comments coming from the room tonight. If you are representing a group, we do ask that you state so before you begin speaking. We do ask that you state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin. We'll open the public comment period now.
Any topic for each of the board members? I have assigned topic for you.
Thank you.
If you want to distribute or whatever. We have to keep these all while we're talking?
No, here at the left, you can take it up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bob Earhart, Fifth District. In 2019, Ed Moran and Steve Bothers and citizens of Kingley, two promises would remain unfulfilled. Rob Van for all citizens has quoted as in the country courier and lower taxes. Focus of this comment is latter. However, I will say, citizens in the Fifth District are nowhere near any promises he made regarding the internet, perhaps even farther away, given the lack of leadership and the interaction with RBC, which was most likely option in 2019. So that brings us to taxes. We're clearly promising citizens to lower taxes, but two years later, not a single real estate or personal property tax has been lowered. If anything, just due votes to increase the operational budget demonstrate the opposite. In addition, in my FOIA email dated 11/3/21, Sleepy Ed cannot identify a single item which he suggests to cut.
Could you keep your comments free of editorialization?
Okay. Ed could not identify a single item which he would suggest can reduce or cut with respect to taxes. And when you attend Kingley GOP meeting, you were cited creep, Article 3 Statement of Principle retreats. Fiscal responsibility and budgetary restraints must be exercised at all levels of government. For that reason, Mr. Moran, you are a hypocrite. Brandon and Biden sound similarly to me in terms of the pronunciation. So I would just like to say, let's go Brandon.
Anyone? All right, we'll close the public comment period. Gentlemen, we have consent agenda. And a motion to adopt unless anybody has any changes.
What you go up?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Chairman.
All right, bring us the whole business resolution 21-87 and resolution 21-88 regarding the payment fund settlements.
So this matter was what you deliberated on in the work session. And just a reminder, so we have two resolutions. One that will approve Kingley joining the national settlements for opioid litigation. And the other resolution that would approve the MOU with the state of Virginia on how to appropriate those funds from that litigation. These two are required to approve for us to join in as well as to maximize the amount of funding with low two.
All right, any questions on this?
I don't think it'll be as much as we'd like for it to be, but it's more than we've ever got.
Right, and I think it'll be useful to help people that have been affected by this. I think it's the biggest goal of this. And I think some credit they go here is a big special topic conference recently. This is a big, you know, big one to have locality yet sharing in this, to share it with our people that are interacting with folks that are affected by this every day. So if there's nothing else, a motion to adopt, we'll do it one at a time, 21-87. So discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman.
21-88. Discussion?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Chairman.
A B, Commissioner of the Revenue, update, Ms. Hungdell.
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Garber. The county previously used the Bright software while financial management. And in 2021, the county transitioned to division on software for its real estate migraines and admin software for financial management pay for all business assets, billing, etc. In mid-July, Biden software was installed in my office and in the treasurer's office. And all access to the Bright software was cut off on Office 31st. On September 28th, I sent a memo to Mr. Hodges and the board listing all the numerous problems my office and treasurer's office was having with admin software. Many of these problems have now been resolved. In September, Mr. Wolf had been working with admin for over a month to create a file from Vision and proper format to download into admin and update information pertaining to real estate transfers, increase values for new construction, and creation of parcels and export that filed into admin. Two weeks ago, Mr. Wolf was finally able to update admin. Unfortunately, the export contained an unacceptable number of errors. Seven of the 93 new construction accounts that new owners did not transfer into admin. In 22 accounts, the new correct value for the improvements did not transfer over into admin. Other problems include new parcels that were created in Vision that were transferred to admin, quoted as inactive, which means they were empty now billed, or they were not transferred into admin at all. I ran the admin's contract signed by Miss Tastaneri on March 4, 2020. In the contract, state admin will convert the initial existing data. However, there's no mention in the contract on the continual data transfer that is necessary between Vision and admin, and no guarantee that the data transfer will be accurate. As real estate taxes support 46% of the county's budget, accurate real estate information is extremely important. An accurate method to transfer data from Vision to admin must be developed. The personal property software in admin is not working as intended. Admin is still unable to process DMV monthly downloads or anything. All downloads are pulled over in active status regardless of them being in or out of the county. This causes double work. Currently move out to mess being manually leaving between 16 and 100 vehicles a month. This has been an issue since September. Ms. Hayden has emailed admin about this on October 7th and on November 1st. She supplied a copy of her DMV file to admin on November 3rd. And this issue is still not resolved, and I have not received any further information from admin. This needs to be fixed. The annual download will be done in January and will contain many more vehicles than the monthly downloads. Information regarding vehicles that need to be supplemented must now be manually entered. This allows room for error. It takes a lot more time. Personal taxes, property taxes support 17% of the county's budget, and revenue will be lost if these issues are not corrected. I'm asking the board to drive Mr. Wolf to make fixing these two issues his number one priority. When the personal property tax books needed to be completed, Mr. Wolf was calling and emailing admin several times a day. Other problems that exist is the creation of rollback tax assessments. In admin, the process is very cumbersome. They do not give the calculations. We must first do the calculations by hand and then issue 11 supplements for each rollback for six years of taxes and five years of interest. Then those six of 11 supplements must be combined into one bill. Ms. Bergeron introduced six rollback tax assessments to birthday and half. Admin was provided with a copy of the business license spreadsheet that was kept up to date previous admin transition. All business accounts were transferred to admin as active, even though 1,849 accounts were inactive. After two months, admin was down able to fix the problem, and Ms. Hayden had been manually correcting 1,849 records. Data pertaining to business name, mailing, property address, and account notes were not transferred correctly. Ms. Hayden had manually updated another 1,100 records. Admin does not provide business license renewal online. Approximately 300 business licenses were issued online last year. This number increases each year. This will be inconvenient to the business owners and require more work around this. The March 3, 2020 contract state that admin is responsible for any software modification or upgrades during the 1 year warrant. I don't know when that one year term started clicking, but I would like the county attorney to review this contract and see if the admin system delivered what it was required to deliver. Because my office needs both modifications and upgrades. And if it's not included in the contract, the process to get those modification updates need to be started. I have two new positions in my office, but a status spending time developing. An assessment office auditing business license or assessing all construction, just not new dwellings. I'm very rarely staying afloat because of all the extra work that has been done manually now that East Street automated. And in accordance with Section 2.2-3711829 of Code of Virginia, because discussion in open session with adversity, I argue position of the board, I move the board to convene in closed meeting and discuss the word of a public contract either way, vision or warrant.
Okay.
That's not anything with these problems. This is something completely different.
Okay, well, that's a motion that the board can make.
Oh, okay.
No.
All right.
So is that something you're prepared to discuss in a closed session? Does your desire to discuss in a closed session? Okay, well, then what we'll do is we'll add that to what we've got on ours tonight. So do you have that closed session cited somewhere that I can?
Yeah.
And that's a lot of us. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's a G.
Okay, that's all I have. If you have any questions?
All right, anybody have any questions for Ms. Hungdell there?
Steve, I have a question of Mr. Hodges. The one year timeframe that she was speaking on, is that the start? I do not know. I haven't checked as to when that plot started. I'd actually like to see the contract myself.
Oh, I have.
You do?
Yeah.
To my recollection, that was never presented to the board. And what was it? It wasn't?
Yeah, I'd like to see it. You were here for that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I know. So.
And I have the resolution that began to get the process started with the new computers in the office. How do you want to answer?
Sure, we've had a question coming in. You said you've got something.
This is resolution 17-08, February 27, 2017. Next one, may I ask Travis Wolf for the contract? He now made the contract in that resolution, and now from this does announce.
27, then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know what that, I don't probably that resolution specifically is that. You know, we've been talking about migrating platforms for a long time.
Yeah.
I think the decision to go with admin was in a administratively after some meetings and discussion with finance and schools. Mr. Greenwood, what's your question?
I have the same question. It might be similar pertaining to what you just said about difference in system in admin and Bright. Is that? I know we drew out their assessment, and we went back to the old assessment, but why were there so many problems with going back to the old assessment? People have been calling me, and still going back to their last assessment, mailing to the same address. People are getting stuff mailed to addresses that they have not lived at for over five or 10 years.
That is something I want to discuss.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to do to that.
Time check. Vincent and I.
Well, I'll hold that. All right.
Yeah. My office and treasurer's office.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
We'll continue this discussion a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 21-89, appropriate funding for additional temporary employee wages and hiring of a full-time staff member and a treasurer's office updating the bankroll.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. We had a good holiday.
You too.
All right, so yeah, I still have my temporary employee, and I didn't budget for him to be as long as he has been, because I didn't anticipate that I would meet him this long. But I do feel he's wrapping up, but I do need additional funds to cover the remainder of the time that he has left or that he hasn't heard. So, excuse me, Wes, here a question. For the $4,000.
How long, so this Robert Vaya company, they are still in the treasurer's office?
One of their gentlemen, folks is in the office, yes. And he got here at the end of July, and things were way worse than anticipated, so he's entering all information for the schools and for the counties.
Have they been any help at all?
He has been a great deal of help in just at least getting the information entered. I mean, I was five months behind when I got here, so, and then I wasn't able to concentrate on it after that. So if I didn't have him, we wouldn't even have the information entered as is.
The.
I don't have it.
Okay.
I'm good. Okay, I know I've had folks come to courthouse looking through the treasurer's office, and I send them over here, which isn't on you. You're looking at me funny, but it isn't on you. What are you telling them about personal property tax? Can you bring it up and they pay it then?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. So the personal property tax bills, we communicated as many ways as possible on the webpage, on Facebook page, my telephone recording analysis. You know, personal property taxes have not been mailed out yet. They will be mailed out this week, I think, absolutely tomorrow, and then the due date is January 15th. When they come here in person and inquire, a lot of them do want to go ahead and pay now because they got their real estate bills, and they tell me they didn't get their personal property tax bills, and they want to go ahead and pay. So we let them pay. We'll print it for them.
So many people are still not getting that January 15th.
They don't, and I don't know. I don't know what else we could have done. We put it in the paper, and we have a public hearing, and we've communicated every possible. So some folks are just not going to get the message beforehand. That's been the real crazy time. And with that.
Yeah, so since this resolution is somewhat of an omnibus handling of your whole issue, why don't you carry on with the second part of that?
Yes. So I had a part-time deputy, and she left recently to pursue full-time. So that leads me back to square one when I first came on board, and that's just my two deputies and myself. And here we are again in tax time, and so we are grounding. So I really do need to hire a full-time associate with hopes to train one of my deputies to become the chief deputy treasurer. So we really do need a full-time person.
Mr. Chair, I mean, so this position was basically the open position that was not filled when you took office. Is that what you wanted to fill?
Well, so the position I was left vacant was a chief deputy treasurer position. So that's still going to stay vacant right now. I would like to train someone to move into that position. Can't do that if I don't have another full-time person. So that full-time person would just be a deputy.
So I guess when I'm asking, once you have somebody fully qualified for the chief deputy treasurer, is that going to equate as an additional employee?
No, I will anticipate just making a salary increase at the time when I feel that's appropriate, and I'm hoping that coincides with the budget for next year.
The other question is, what type of prime is involved with that position, chief deputy?
Well, so like that person right now would need, say, for instance, bankruptcy training, collection training, also training on reconciliation. So.
Is this on JT or something that they can pick up through, let's say, school, university, tenure?
Well, through the Treasurers Association of Virginia, they offer all kinds of classes. Like I've taken the bankruptcy, and I've taken the collections, and I've taken the bankruptcies, and that's kind of thing. So this person would also do that as well. And I'm doing the officer training coming up actually in another week or two. The commissioner of revenue and health are doing that. So that's, you know, absolutely necessary. Any other questions?
How long will this additional funding get you to start this stuff?
I don't anticipate having him as maybe another week or so.
So from a budgeting standpoint, I've got what I understand this to be. So you, where I think we are through it, you tell me when I'm wrong. So we've got a budgeted position in the form of the chief debt, right?
No, I don't believe that's budgeted because she didn't ask.
She didn't ask. Because I know it's a position we traditionally budgeted for, not this.
Traditionally.
Okay.
I asked to keep the funds there so that in case I came across something like this, that I would at least have those there, but that was to not.
So we're just going to do this from unassigned funds for this year. We'll work it into the budget for the next year. So we don't really need to do a budget amendment. This is what we're doing. Okay. All right. All right, any questions on that? Okay.
So, yeah, I guess I do have one. Do we have a position open right now that's that's soured or budgeted?
Well, so I have a part-time position, and so I'm doing away with that part-time, and I just want to fill it with a full-time. I really need that part-time position to be ultimately full-time.
So really what overall are you looking for is one that I?
Well, half, another.
Another half.
Another half.
Another half and some additional funding to pay the rest of what she's going to need. I just, in my head, we had the position budgeted. That's because we budgeted it so long.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, we've got resolution 21-89. The.
Chairman, I like the motion that we passed, resolution 21-88.
All right. Is that going to end your discussion? You're done, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman.
Hi.
And as far as an update from my office, those state bills did drop last week, so we have had an influx today, but times are ringing off the hook. People have come in, lines are out the door. legislature revenue services also pretty much in the same boat. There's a lot, as she indicated, information that went out that was not accurate. Yeah, we're coming around here. Any other questions about anything else as far as updates in my office?
How are you? Are you having the same issues with this all?
Um, so for instance, last time I mentioned to you all that I had a gentleman who had owed about $19,000, and now said he has like a $3,200 credit. And that has been in Evans for the last couple of months for a resolution. I've been told numerous times it's in development. Travis came in today to my office to ask what, you know, he could do to help. And he'd sent me a file recently, a data file that Edmonds had gathered, and we looked at that today. It's laborious to figure it out, but I was able to figure out. It was information from Bright that they had gathered. I and Travis today were able to look at it within a few minutes and determine, oh, here's that man's balance. Yes, as of June 30th, he did owe us $15,000. And I had Travis look at the admin screen. The admin screen shows that he has a credit of $3,200. Why did it only take me that short period of time? It'd taken Edmonds two months, and it's still in development. It's not acceptable. So what else are they, you know, dragging their feet on that's in development that they could not have answered to?
Do not.
Yeah. But Travis is trying. He needs to be very much in there. What can you do for me? So I appreciate that. All right.
Anybody else?
Do you feel that there is adequate forensic data so that in the event there's something like that that keeps occurring, that there's a way to trace it back to?
With the information that, you know, Travis said that I had, sure, I can hunt and pack and try to figure it out. It took me a little while to figure it out. And when I spoke to Mr. Ashcraft, the incoming commissioner, I mean, county administrator, he asked me how long did we have the Bright system prior to the evidence, and I told him we had it about a month and a half, and he was very surprised when he got jolted back and said, when they got theirs, they had the old system for a year. I said, we've had it a month and a half. If I were to have it right, I could have pulled that up within a matter of seconds to find out exactly what's going on. We have people coming in who want to know, why is my balance like this? We can't explain it. We have no idea. The information that came over is so convoluted. I can't explain it. So if we did have it right, it would be a simple, oh, yes, here's the problem, and here's how we can go and fix it. As it is now, it's like, we don't know. We'll have to get back with you. That's very frustrating.
Yes.
Any more questions?
That's one that probably shouldn't be asked here.
Okay. Well, if you want me in close, I should know that.
Well, I don't know that we've got any minutes, so fall out for that. Maybe just a phone call. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. I didn't want to give you another update.
Okay.
Sorry. Citizens can no longer repay their property taxes or some property taxes a month. That went away with Edmonds. So, you know, folks who were used to making, let's say, a hundred dollars a month can no longer do that. And when I told Mr. Ashcraft that, he was very surprised about that as well. It's very disappointing. We have a lot of citizens who are used to doing that. That really helped them come December, that all their taxes were mostly paid for by the time December got around. Now we have to go around a very discombobulated way to make that happen, and that's just not a good thing for our citizens. So, and we still haven't been able to get the tax records, the collection books. We haven't been able to get their stuff in easily either, or provide them updated information easily. There's so much more, but mine rings pretty far.
So when was the last time they can make a payment? In July?
Prepay?
Prepay.
Yeah, thank you. Before June 30th. Yeah, thank you. Before June 30th. On the personal property. A lot of folks also cannot access their accounts of their personal property information online because they all have pins that Edmonds assigned them. So if they had had a pin before, they no longer have that pin. Edmonds assigned everybody new pins. Well, the only way to give them their pins is for us to give them that pin back. Well, that's really not a good process to get into, especially on personal property because it's non-disclosable. And a lot of people cannot use the system. They found it, they can't enter their information to get their personal property online. So that's increased the phone calls here in our office as well.
Interestingly, I was looking for mine today.
Did you find it?
I did.
You will not. You need to call me if you're pinned. But we don't have all day to sit there and give everybody their pins.
I had a resident call me that says she used to do everything, like you said, manually, but I asked her to, and she tried it this year. Well, actually, she did it last year. She sent it where she was supposed to, but it didn't get there in time. Because like I said, it was cut off. So then she got a late fee because it went, her money went to the company, but since they didn't get it to you all, they ended up having to give it back, but she didn't know that.
Yeah. So again, I would like to see a process, an automated process where someone's online and they want to pay their personal property tax and they can say, oh, I don't have my pin and they can request it.
Right. The point of this was not to go back.
Right.
Well, right now, deep breath. Administrative matters, anything you want to specifically present? That brings us to tonight's public hearing. We have ordinance 11 dash 21, a rezoning request, request number Z dash zero two dash 21, taxman parcel 19 dash 28, for Steve Adams Incorporated, Ms. Graham.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We do have a rezoning request for Mr. Adams. The property is located on Danny's Mall Road. It's approximately seven, like fifteen acres. Currently in AC and he'd like to have it sent to rural residential. We can pull up some of the information here. This is an aerial. And as you can see, pretty much most of the lots on that side of the road are just under an acre. There are one or two and of course, they're a little bit larger. And then the other side of the road is of course fields. Okay? Everything in blue is rural residential. So you can see that pretty much everything going upward is going to be rural residential. And it extends a little, it extends further up. It's not shown there. This is the plaque that he is proposing. He's wanting to do a single lot division. If the rezoning goes through, to divide the one parcel into two, one would be four acres, then it would be three point fifteen acres and to use the twenty-five foot aggressive, aggressive utility easement on the one side. So that way he would only have the one entrance for the two parcels. He plans to use just the one. Okay? This, and it currently, there is a road that's located on the property that's being used by some other people. And you can kind of see it here where it kind of crosses over from his property on to the, to the other properties. That's looking at it from the road. And that's part of the roadway on the right of his property. Looking to the left of it. And that's looking across the street. This went before the planning commission on November 9th. They voted to approve it four to one. And the rural residential district have approved, they have to have a minimum of three acres. They have to have a minimum frontage of two hundred feet. So he would exceed what's required with that. Doing a single lot division, he would be required to have a twenty-five foot going to the second parcel if he's going to do it, you know, one in front of the other. He has four hundred and some feet across the front, but he was preferring to do it one lot behind the other and then just use the one entrance. And I think that was one of the concerns of the planning commission is that, that he only have the one entrance to not have too many entrances on that roadway.
And the roadway that exists now that goes to other property, is it the same one he's going to use?
It's actually on his property. They've been using it and cutting across.
The way that I look at that survey, that right-of-way the road it's there is actually a fifty-foot easement.
Correct.
No, if you look at it, it's actually on the right side, but the, the entrance that they're using is actually on his property and they cross over and then they get back onto the fifty-foot right-of-way.
So the twenty-five foot easement.
That's what he's proposing, but that, the entrance to the property that you see when you go up there has been being used by the properties on the right to get to the properties on the next to him and behind that. So.
So in the AC district, it's a, they go reform.
And in the AC, it's five acres per lot, minimum of three hundred feet of frontage on the secondary.
And he's got four hundred and two, something, something like that.
It was a little over four hundred.
I've spoken to Mr. Adams several times and maybe if we approve this, there's probably hundreds of lots in this county that they can come down to the same pay. I just think that if we approve it, we're looking at come to a district near you. You know, this is, this is not hardship. It is a full profit application.
Most of our rezonings normally are with this. I don't like spot zoning. It's a no-no. With this one though, we already have the rural residential.
Well, if you, if you look at the rural residential, I'm thinking that part of the smaller lots were originally a family subdivision, correct?
Not all of them. The ones to the left are, the ones to the right, that was a subdivision.
And when were they done, Red?
I don't remember the date of them.
Well, when they were done, they were done in compliance with the zoning ordinances, I'm sure.
At the time they were.
My problem is, you know, we just, we just came through the zoning provision of the zoning ordinances. It was hard. It was hard. We almost forgot the process. And this is what we, what we agreed that, you know, I think that Mr. Adams said he might be grandfathered to the previous ordinance, but still, that was still filed, like, because it did allow for it, cloud law, I think, with the minor subdivision. But, you know, this is not a subdivision, but it wouldn't follow that, one, because of acreage, two, because of the road frontage.
Yeah, he wouldn't be able to do a minor. He doesn't have the acreage there for a minor. He was just, you know, he's wanting to do a single lot division and Mr. Adams is here to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, I certainly haven't changed.
Mr. Graham, have you got a minority with this case, any other? Yes, as Mr. Graham said, the planning commission did approve four of one to approve this and it is, Mr. Adams is just trying to split it into two lots, mainly because the joining lots all around there are even smaller, even though they were done maybe in the nineties. He just wants to do it now and of course it is for profit. Most people that do spend this kind of money, twenty-five hundred dollars to do a permit, do, these are exceptions. That's why they cost so much to do it. That's why they bring them to the board so they can make an exception if it's allowed or requested. And like, you know, this situation, we think, I think as well, that it is pretty good because everything else is, he's not trying to extend the area further than, like beyond the end and extend it even further out. He is using an existing easement that the neighbors have illegally been using that entrance for years. They were supposed to put that fifty-foot easement on their property and they didn't. They've been coming across Mr. Adams' land for all these years, but it wasn't Mr. Adams' land all this time, so that's another issue. But he's not willing to change that or make them build a new road twenty-five feet over. We're using the same industry for all lots, lots of previous that used plus his two lots and just add an existing twenty, extra twenty-five foot easement on the back lot to get to it from the same road. I think he's done what he needs to do. Like I said, everybody that usually comes to one of these things is doing it for profit. Nobody's not doing it. It's not profitable, except
Mr. Jefferson clearly wants to move west of this location, well, mostly northern seventies and eighties. And I know I was at the planning meeting with Mr. Rogers, who was his dismayed with Devonport Road weather. There's been four or five lots built in the last year that that location is for. Two, there's a lot of small pieces of property like that. One was one, but two, there's just encouraging more. Why do people do it in the first place?
This deed that you supplied, book two forty-two, page seven twenty-four, it sticks with a fifty-foot easement. So this, that fifty-foot easement is probably for existing, which was probably a minor subdivision. So are you saying that that easement is also going to be useful access to this right-of-way property? This won't be create?
I'll let you get on, pull it up, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to see here, but this is the, this is Mr. Adams' property here. This is the fifty-foot right-of-way on the adjacent property to go back to those lots there. If you can see on his property here, you can see where they use this part and then they cross over and they continue up. But the fifty-foot is actually supposed to be over here, not on this parcel, but they do utilize it.
I just have a problem creating an easement for a right-of-way lot. There's a lot, it's a lot of problems there, you know, so we're going to have to start saying no because we're going to open the flood, the flood gate. The next request will be what we did. You know? I just I'm just not in favor.
I understand from Mr. Rogers also that there's a lot of traffic going back to the airport. I certainly don't see it. A few times I go wider, but he says that there's a significant amount of trucks, cars, et cetera, delivering air supply supplies for crap posting.
That would be Mr. Craft's spraying aviation.
In fact, I was sitting and talking to Mr. Rogers one day and there was three vehicles that were around us to go back there. I didn't, I never realized it was that much traffic. And how would that be impacted?
I haven't had any complaints. I'm sure that it's probably seasonal. There are more times throughout the year that the traffic is going to probably be worse than the airport, especially when they're doing the crop spraying.
That has nothing to do with this case that we're talking about, but if this doesn't go through, Mr. Adams has the perfect right to tell the people that are against this, that they'll have to move that road over. In that case, they'll have to move the fifty-foot right-of-way onto their own property, which will make it two entrances there. Mr. Adams is legally using his own entrance, which he'll use for his one lot, he gets one lot, and then there'll be another entrance fifty feet next to him to service the other two lots of, I just like.
Andrew as well. If Andrew at some point in time, would that be a prescriptive, if you use it continuous over a period of years or?
There's, there's a long, difficult legal test you have to meet to be a prescriptive use and have that. And then you got to go forth to prove it. And without knowing more, I can't really hold on to that.
Mr. Chair, I guess I look at this thing a little bit different than most. Other than one lot that I see on that side of the road, unless I'm looking at the plaque difference. It is loaded up with lots all the way down. It's got residents on, though, smaller than what he wants to do. I don't see where the impact is going to be that.
They, they were created when these unmoveds just allowed. You know, we just, we just went down.
And that's why, that's why he's here now. He's asking for that.
This is an exception. Well, it's a, it's a rezoning, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing the same thing that this comment is saying, which is, you know, we, we try to, you know, kind of manage users in all of this and that's kind of the goal here. I mean, we're literally, but, you know, we're sandwiched between two, you know, some that are already RR, some that, that were done in a different manner, but easily fit the description of an RR lot, you know, to, to the immediate north of that, I just I don't see a compelling reason other than a philosophical one not to approve. And I think the philosophical argument doesn't really carry water here because again, you're not extending any type of non-conforming use. You're trying to shoehorn in something that's not already there. I, I see the same thing that you see on this map here, which are a lot of smaller lots.
Smaller, yeah.
Line of the road. A smaller lot immediately about it. Lots zoned RR about it. And lots that about it that I don't know how that, the way that they're being used.
So, so we're looking at in the future. We're going to look at all of them the same way. It, it will be, it will be coming out and down. So is this the position that you're going to take in the future?
Yeah. I don't know. To answer that, I don't know. I'll have to look.
It's, it's going to be hard to refuse.
Yeah, I'm not sure the floodgate's going to come out open either, but you know.
I mean, again, this isn't, I just, I don't see it that way. I don't see this as something that's, again, way out of whack with, with the current use of all the surrounding land. And I think the key word here for me is surrounding. Again, we're not really extending anything. I guess by strict definition we are, but in actual use we're not. So, you know, that might give me pause, but I don't see a compelling reason that this is somehow wrong and different and bad compared to what everything else is around.
Mr. Chair, might I make a suggestion? I don't believe we've had a public hearing yet.
I'm normally better more on. All right. So if you have nothing else to add, we'll go ahead and do that public hearing. All right. So we're going to, well, Mr. Adams, your time will come after this whole hearing to reserve time for you to answer any questions that are brought up. We were going to conduct a public hearing on ordinance eleven dash twenty-one, which is rezoning request Z O two dash twenty-one, taxman parcel nineteen dash twenty-eight of public, public hearing. Now, same rules. A of public, public hearing now, same rules as a public conference. Please state your name and address, void against speed, three minutes for individual comments, or please state the group you're representing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Don Wagner, District, and I'm sort of on the signing commission. I voted against this. For one reason. There is unquestionably an overpopulation of small lots on this field. A rural residential lot has a minimum of three acres. The minimum lot size in the Agricultural Conservation District is five acres. This is allowable under the code. I'm gonna be clear on that. However, I have a personal problem with that. The other issue I want to discuss is the fact that is the, um. Easement across the Davenport property. That easement was given to the, was, well, was Davenport's easement that granted. Use of that easement to. A family member back in nineteen ninety-five, I believe. But that old easement was there sometime since, sometime back in the nineteen eighties. If you look at where that easement was located, it's on the lot line between the Davenport's and Mr. Adams' current property. That easement that's been used for, since nineteen eighty-five in its current location. If you look at the location where that easement would be, should have been. There are several large trees anywhere from two to three feet. Three in that easement or the existence of that easement. On, um, on Mr. Adams' lot. The prior owners have allowed use of that for thirty, forty years. So to say that they would have to relocate and then put down their property. And cut all those trees down, I think is wrong. I think they have, I'm not sure what. Our term is common is on this, but. Under the old law, previous law, that was an adverse possession. They, the current, previous owner, pre- prior of Mr. Adams. And then using that or had allowed use of that lot and had blocked it off. So that. From what I recall from some of the old law, uh, that would have been adverse possession. So that's the issue I had with that. And again, what Ms. Graham had said, this, this is allowed under the law. I just have an issue with allowing. Rural residential subdivisions to be. Designed reasonably and agricultural project, agricultural conservation area. In such a remote areas, but. I don't have any questions.
Probably, probably houses that, that we're speaking of.
But it looks like we call this any other. Is there anyone else? One, so three, our whole hearing is, all right.
Well, the houses that we're speaking of on the small lots along Davis Mill Road. What is this on? Is that AC?
The ones that were in the blue going up were RR. So if you're facing. A lot to the right, there RR to the left or AC.
Yeah. Which is the same style lot to the left.
Right, Ms. Graham, would you mind pulling this up?
That one right there.
Yes.
It doesn't show it all the way up with the, the lots going up. Everything in the blue is RR and, and the white is AC.
What is that one little piece and access to the property that is behind, there's that. To the left, uh, yeah, right at the top, that little strip that's white.
It's a access to the back field.
That's what I think.
There was, um, I did find in our system where there was a proposed subdivision back through there, but it was, um, never. Done, so I don't think it ever got final approval. There was some proposed subdivisions back through there. They have like two roads that go back the way.
And the nineteen B one twenty-five, is that a individual lot?
That's a, a one lot. I believe it does.
Why was it left up?
I don't know.
It just looks.
Well, again, depending on when they cut some of those lots up, it could have been done before the zoning ordinance, if it was done before the, you know, nineteen eighty-one. And again, that's, that's my point here when we talk about, you know, some type of. Non-conforming use or, or something that's like, where it otherwise doesn't make sense, you know, the fact that there's lots. That are on the map to the right of this lot aren't RR. I'm just surmising based on the information provided from, from my left, that it's, it's entirely likely that those lots were chopped up before zoning was a thing.
To the, to the left of that lot, um, Strad's lot, there are a couple of family divisions that were done.
I'd like to point out, Mr. Williams' comment, trees can be cut down with a chainsaw. I mean, it's just nicer than neighbors to let them. Use their property for those years to come through there, but it's not legal. It's not legal. Fifty foot right away is supposed to be down towards property, not on Mr. Adams' property. As the legal counsel says that they can get it because they've used it all this time, but that's crap.
Mr. Chair. Let's keep it up. Interesting comment, though. You said some of these were, were done family subdivision?
The, some of the ones, um, to the left of it, down toward the bottom, there were a couple that were, um, divided as family divisions. So we have a couple of like. I think one is three acre and one is a five acre.
So it, it again brings up the point that it's not even enough common practice in this immediate area. It's just that the family subdivision. Is not available avenue to have because of the situation.
With that statement, Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Sure.
That we approve ordinance eleven dash twenty-one?
All right, both to approve. Second discussion.
Ms. Graham, can we ask for more descriptive language and? Something that allows, I understand Mr. Adams is gonna allow this free. Therefore, to continue utilizing that road, that access. Does there need to be more descriptive language in the resolution that covers that?
Can we put that in the resolution for resounding?
Unless it's been proffered, Mr. Moore, and I don't think it's something that this board can impose by the resolution or ordinance. I mean, this is a resounding, not a conditional, not a special exception. I mean, the board could always table it and request such a process.
We do have Mr. Adams here, who can speak on the use of that good light.
Mr. Adams, you desire to speak, anything?
Benny, Jim, Ford, Mr. Williams. I'm here to answer any questions you may ask, might have. If I can, um, obviously I've been studying quite good a while here, and, uh. I don't think I'm asking for anything. It's unreasonable. It doesn't fit in the, in the area there, but being sandwiched in together. But I'll try to answer any questions that you guys might have.
So I think the, the, the question and the reason that we brought you up here was, uh, Mr. Moore's question about continued use of, of specifically that. That easement, the force of the access road is on, um. The, the property question here, and, um. If you were willing to provide any assurances that there would be continued use provided to that section of the, the access.
Well, to start off with, I have no reason whatsoever to stop anybody from using it. I haven't owned a property for less than a year. And I understand the prescriptive easement of laws and like Mr. The Rock, The Rock said, it goes in the front, but I had no. No issues with anybody using it to keep it where it is. That doesn't affect me in any way whatsoever. To what my plans are to do, to come in and use that same interest in getting to a four acre lot near three acre lot.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Moore, anything further on that? Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, before we call, call of the numbers, is there anything else? The one, one, one. Arthur Branch, we're ready to.
Mr. Garber?
Name.
Mr. Moran?
Name.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?
Hi. Passes. All right, next up, board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Mr. Phil, I was, uh, predicated on. Comments made earlier, but I just wanted to invite everybody to, to expect them to see the body. Grant. Notice sometime, you know. This is late December, a little bit of that, we've not heard any derogatory information come back. The challenges from all parties are due on December third. So that's another milestone.
Very good, Mr. Guard.
I'd like to congratulate anyone in the region too, the area of football. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Al friends over in Point County. Years they had in football, for many years they struggled. And it looks like perseverance is, uh, finally they lost. They also made a play, also they lost, I think that has. But thank everybody for participating. This is the one person, uh, you and I, we had many conversations and that's just with my opinion.
Did Mr. Hodgins wish to state for the record that West Point also missed playoffs?
They didn't, they didn't took all the thunder out of it.
I was leaving you something.
But yeah, congratulate West Point. And I guess it's my turn.
Yes.
I don't, I don't really have a whole lot. I think folks, when they come up here to make comments, though, they ought to leave. The adjectives that are. Other than that, I've got.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you very much. Fairly decent, probably says Zoom rules changed. We didn't know a lot of people there tonight, but. Still, people are watching and people are here, and I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving this past week, this Thanksgiving. Hope everybody had a nice time with their family, didn't do much. And this is a perfect example of the good board working together. As you say, we all aren't gonna have the same opinions all the time. If we all looked at all the options and all the facts, we come up with the. Uh, ruling, and sometimes it may not favor what somebody wants. Sometimes it may favor another person, but that's the way to work. It's a good example of how we can work well together. I think everybody, everybody's opinion, how we go along. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Well, there's certainly enough in the news to talk about, keep talking about it the rest of the night, uh, but, but I'll just take them as a personal privilege. My uncle, Tommy Kuzlowski, when at times it better help, was a regular attendee. He passed away this past Saturday. And I don't know how many of you out there, proud of the night knowing, but again, days past would have been well, well known, figured in that, in this room. Was, uh, inducted into the West Point Sports Hall of Fame, uh, a few years ago for football and. I believe track and field, the other one, Virginia Tech, red, longtime media employee. So, uh, big loss to our family. Uh, I just wanted to take a moment up here to, uh, to remember and. Otherwise, thank you all for attending tonight. Uh, thanks to all of the board for a vigorous, respectful debate that we had tonight. Of course, and I look forward to, uh, to many more over the next couple of years. And Mr. Moore, yes. Uh, we, we are hoping, uh, that we will have very good news on, on the internet here in the next couple of months. Uh, you know, the combination of, of many years of work to get together, the package that we got together this event and the awarded. Will solve, uh, you know, solve our problem in a. In a really good timeline and for a really good practice compared to what we have been, have been. Good thoughts for that application, please, as it goes through prime stages of what we've earned. With that, we do have a closed session, and since I have the additional code section here, I'll go ahead and raise out, so. I'll make a motion from the chair to convene and close meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven, eight, one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter. Involving the appointment of individuals to the Middle Peninsula Northern Net Community Services Board, and in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight, eight of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel on a specific legal matter. Involving legal obligations regarding tax exemptions requiring provision of legal advice by counsel, and in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight, nine of the Code of Virginia. Because discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board.
Sure.
Discussion.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?
We're in a closed session and we'll leave. Make the motion to reconvene in an open session?
So moved.
And discussion, this branch.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?
I need a motion on SR one.
So.
Discussion. This branch.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?
If there's, if there's no business with the board, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, wait. Resolution twenty-one dash ninety, appointing, uh, Mr. Pike to the Middle Peninsula Northern Net Community Service Board. So, you got the resolution?
Oh, that's great. December, well, it expires December first, twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Oh, you want it next year, three or term ending, December third, fourth, ninth, ninth.
All right, motion. Please say. Let's go.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to.
Mr. Moran? Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Spalt?